Good evening and welcome to Tuesday, September seventeen, twenty twenty four. I can tell you in every school district, a regular meeting of the school board. You would please rise and join in the public legion.
I want to legion to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
I'd like to take a moment of silence, remembrance of nine eleven and as well as those who were lost their lives tragically in our at Y G High School tragedy. Thank you. All right, up first, we have discussions, our external audit and extra classroom activity funds report for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four.
Good evening, I'm Joe Hero with the Bonadilla Group. I'm the principal responsible for overseeing the audit. We just met with the audit committee to go through the financial statements. Just the scope of our services, what I'm going to cover. The audit of the financial statements in accordance with government auditing standards. The report on internal controls and compliance, also in accordance with government auditing standards. The audit of the extra classroom activity fund, that's on the cash basis. And then there's a required communications letter, which is just a standard letter. I'll just touch on that real quick. So in summary, we anticipate issuing an unmodified opinion that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. This is the highest level of assurance we can give with regards to internal controls and compliance. No material weaknesses in internal controls, no compliance issues were noted. And then the extra classroom activity fund, unmodified opinion on that as well. Again, highest level of assurance we can give on that. And then the required communications letter, the big change, the big things to note there is no changes, no new accounting policies this year, no disagreements with management, no material audit adjustments, and no, as I just said to the audit committee, no opinion shopping, no consultations with other auditors. And again, I have to do this in the public meeting, thank Val, Sharon, and all the other staff for their assistance in getting this presented today, which, as we mentioned, is the earliest date we've ever presented this. So we're well ahead of the game. So that's it. Questions? All right.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, we have public comment, or is there any public comment on consent agenda items on? All right, seeing any. Okay, any board discussion on consent agenda? Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second?
Second.
Excellent, thank you. All taken. Right?
With the approval of that, we have a couple of our staff members who just received tenure. So we want to highlight that. Ms. Donovan is here with her significant other, I see. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Lynch?
All right, good evening, everyone. So it's a pleasure to stand here and say some words about Jen Donovan and recognition of her tenure. So as a teaching assistant at Nassau, Jen works mostly with our second grade students. And within the school day, she does a combination of things, mostly pushing in to support instruction and pulling students out to do small group work. Luckily, in addition to me going into classrooms to see Jen, she pulls students out to the hallway frequently, and we have a little table set up. And I'm always, sometimes I take this personally, but I'm, on a serious note, I'm always struck when I'm walking through the second grade hallway, and the students don't even notice that I'm walking by her table because of how focused and locked in they are. On any given day, Jen can be working with students who are struggling academically, behaviorally, or emotionally, and this can be challenging. Within this setting, she has a very unique way of understanding what her students need and truly believes in meeting students where they're at. If you know Jen, or just spoke with her in the hallway, you know that she has some sense of humor. And in a job where every day brings something new, her humor helps keep everyone moving in the office, coming off the bus, in the hallways, in the classroom, and that's a true asset to Nassau. Literally, the only negative thing that I can say about Jen Donovan is her choice in college football team. However, I do appreciate that she doesn't.
We are, sorry.
We do appreciate, I do appreciate, that after her Nittany Lions, for the second consecutive year, beat my West Virginia Mountaineers, she didn't show up in the Nittany Lion gear. So that's other people matter, and I appreciate that. We're grateful to have you at Nassau. Thank you for all that you do, and congratulations.
Thank you, and don't forget, I said I was going to buy all your kids Penn State gear.
Yes, you did. Congratulations.
Thank you.
What's of Danielle Williams receiving the tenure today?
Danielle's also a company driver, so she came up there as well. So Danielle, although she's getting tenure today, after forty years, Danielle's been with us at the high school for quite some time, and like truly loved and adored. She started as a sub, saw a great potential in her at that time, and next she was a teaching assistant, worked very well with students with special needs, who needed, you know, more help, more guidance, and then obviously most recently as a teacher. I'm sorry about the graphic. She is, always has a smile on her face. She's a very engaging teacher, and you can see how much her kids enjoy being in her class based on their participation and engagement with her. And most recently, last year, she also became involved in our plays and in our musicals. And again, this year, we're starting with Steel Magnolias, and casting was done, and she's an integral part of that program, and will also be part of the musical in the springtime. So we're extremely lucky to have you, everyone. Thank you.
Congratulations to you, Fred, and walk by your room, and look at it, because she's focusing, her kids are focused on her, and she's teaching, and it's wonderful that you're ready to see to grab it. She's right here on your own roof. Congratulations to both of you. Before you leave, if you are going to leave, do you want to grab a picture of you? So if you have to, Mr. Perry, over there, you can take it as you go. We do have a couple of presentations to go through after this.
No pressure, though.
No pressure.
Thank you both, and congratulations. All right, up next, we have discussion and presentations. First is Dr. Fred Newell on the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five district goals.
For instance, you can go out and get in the picture with them. Then you have to, you have to come back, though, they don't.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
So this should look familiar, this is something I showed last year towards the end of the year. And it shows the three prong approach, construction, capacity building between instruction students, capacity building educators, student buildings, so having the three. Having the three makes sense, right, students, educators, and that's what we're about. So we try to stay aligned to that, right? That's a word you've heard me use before, we try to stay aligned to the three prong approach. As in, not only the goals, but just really as we do what we do. That's one of the things that we talk about often, and we hear the principals talk about, choosing new programs, aligns. So three things are really pretty hot, especially the first two. The last one, it's a timing for us, but things that we have to focus on this year. I believe in the New York State Blue Ribbon Commission, we'll hear a little bit about that in a moment. The book, The Anxious Generation, which local members haven't seen. Not just necessarily the book, just the whole concept of what social media and cell phones, what they're doing to society, and also the governor's kind of weighing in on that too. So that's definitely a hot topic. And then, you know, kind of a celebratory way, we are approaching our hundred and sixtyth anniversary, which is crazy when you think about it, being eighteen sixty five. So we'll talk about that. So as a reminder, the Blue Ribbon Commission, you know, nineteen, excuse me, twenty nineteen, board regions wanted to rethink the graduation requirements and the commission, this commission. Last November, they presented twelve recommendations, but did not give any further guidance on those twelve recommendations are, and I'm not going to read all of them, this is in the PowerPoint. Here's the first six, make sure you looked at it. If you look at the first one, you place three diploma types, one diploma, option, and those and those and stuff. One of the ones. Responsibility, financial literacy, this is something that we've talked about before. Internships. Credit requirements, that one, and the next. This, I thought, summarized it a little bit easier and a little bit better. And this is what they just said in June. So they had a meeting in June, and really, there's four proposed transformations. That, the New York State Portrait of the Graduate, which I want to talk about. Permit, refined credits, the expanded learning experiences, sunset diploma assessment requirements, and this term on the permit. So these are the big things you're thinking that you're going to do. And they're going to be talking again in November, which I'm sorry, about timelines and expectations to do all this. So you sort of can't develop something yet because they have to give us these timelines. These are coming in November, and then we have to read and own them because, you know, they're going to want to move, and that's what I'm doing. Nothing is going to have to be done for this school year, but we're going to have to plan positive for next school year. Getting this stuff. So this will be something that, once it comes out, and that's the principle. So the first transformation there was, was the New York State Portrait of the Graduate. So I wrote about this in the newsletter, the weekly newsletter, it's in Sola and Paria. But New York wants to adopt this, so this is what their version of the Portrait of the Graduate is. And if you look at each one, particular picture, noble citizen, effective community, socially emotional confidence, cultural confidence, literate across country areas, innovative progress. You will see, if you can send this, these will blend nicely with the Spackner book. Principals have said that, administrative staff have said that, the board is just saying, wow, this is.
A mission statement.
Yeah, it flows with our mission statement. So we're not necessarily concerned about adopting this, right? If this is what the New York State says, we feel that we're already kind of doing it. But, you know, we might want to look at things we do from this angle, just to stay aligned and that sort of thing. Look, we feel we already are aligned with that, so that's a plus, you know, kind of a head we're doing. We're not going to have to, you know, things that we've already done, you know, to focus on this. This is kind of a breakdown of what's next immediate. So again, this is this theme in June. So July was what just happened, so that's past, and we'll be pushing a couple of feedback. August through October, ongoing statehood engagement. I was just involved with this, this is what I went to last week, some super tenants were there, some owners were there. Teachers weren't allowed to go, community members could go to different sessions. And I'm just stating what the Blue Ribbon Commission is looking to do. I just gave a brief version of that. And that is ongoing, you know, now through October. And then November, that's a hint of that before, is when we're going to get some information that will allow us to, you know, actually think. So you see there what it says in November, full plan presented to the board, and it's a more out plan, and we're looking at the time. That is what we're, that's what we're waiting for. So we're kind of getting ourselves ready to get that information in order to then go. Grabbed up. Something that was dear to us, and we spoke about it at the summer retreat a little bit, and we'll talk about it more here at other board meetings, is the book, The Anxious Generation, and what it, what it has stated. It's given a lot of data and discussion points to some things that we've all been feeling or seeing regarding cell phone use and the bitterness of it. Looking at the cover of the book, we talked about this, there's someone in the wall pit, he was supposed to have fun, and bounced around, and then she's gone. So we are going to engage in this this year. Some of the reasons why, connection to a Harvard study, which I'm going to mention in a second, about loneliness, anxiety, depression statistics, we'll play there with that. The need for collective action in dealing with cell phones, the book talks about. It's not a school's issue, it's not a parent's issue, it's not a community issue, it's not a company issue. It's all of them. And the way to solve it is all goes to be in the heart of it. So we're going to look to try to engage different constituent groups to try to empower this amount. And the big point, the big takeaway is in the book, is to play-based, child-based, or family-based. And around the twenty ten, they offered, they used the, play-based, child-based, social-based, child-based, and, you know, so living professions. So some of the items that we're going to be looking at, or doing is, you know, not support members, administrators, or classes, but administrate yourself down through, almost like a little course on this book, where you have discussions to kind of go through it. The concept of this book aligns very well with P two and the concept of the relationship movement. So that's another reason why this is a book for us to focus on this year. I hope that we discussed it already. We're going to be utilizing information from this faculty meeting, PTA discussions, discussions. And we're actually also awaiting governor, she had stated that she's looking to do something with her cellphone, but she's saying that nothing will happen until soon as Jen. So that gives us time to have these discussions before that, and kind of ramp up to that, so that when we do get whatever means it is, with our community, our teachers, our students, more aware of this. I mentioned before, we have similar studies, so there's a study on loneliness. Americans who said they had no one discussing it, they're not even aware of it. Forty eighteen, a study of outcomes of all kinds of problems in that, in America. Obviously, it's been under the requirement of course. Loneliness doesn't care if you're actually alone. This is something that we talk a lot about, and it's in the presentations. And P two is, we can be with people who need this to feel homeless. Sometimes that's happening, you know, a little bit. As you know, if you're pointing the first, the bones, you know. If you've ever seen this, you have a couple of kids over, all with each other, they're all on their phone. This statistic, there's many statistics in the book, but this one is what really encapsulates that we're supposed to have this discussion, because that loneliness here is an increase in the rate of access episodes. If you look at it, the market in twenty ten is, I don't know if it says, been shifted in the way that we're going to. Also talk about the Harvard study. And this is quite interesting, that wealth, fame, and achievement is less valuable than power of a relationship. And the lessons aren't about wealth or fame, or working hard and hard, the nearest mentions are to that. This study is good relationships keep us happy and available. Again, aligned with P two, what we want to do as far as focus on relationships. Just so happens, the co-founder of P two, Jeff Ryan, I actually had a conversation with him earlier this summer, and I asked him if he would read his book, and he said something else, I'd said that to him. He wrote an article, he's going to find out what the, 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 this book discusses how shift from company to child, to home, which I would, as well to serve anxiety, depression, and access. Which means the importance of the P two program, because it does provide a sign for our pay teachers. So every building will be having all the anxious generation actions on this, we just put bills, so that we can, we're just saying get to Word app, but we can get people, even if they haven't read the book, understanding what's in the book and have the discussions, so that that'll help us when we get to the point of trying to implement something. Right, and we're not sure what that's going to be, right? We want to have the conversations, we want to develop organically, we want to hear from public, but we also want to take what we're reading in the, in the book and in the other data seriously to try to come up with something. And we've already done a few things that I'll eventually report on, on how we have attacked this focus. And then finally, we're going to be celebrating one hundred and sixtieth anniversary this school year, but not until the calendar year changes. So we won't be doing really anything in it about it, except kind of building up momentum. And then once we get past the holidays and, you know, you know, get into the latter part of twenty twenty five this school year, we'll be looking to celebrate in a variety of different ways. Just to point out, you see our crest, you see at the top where the lamp is, and then on the books, I made it bigger here. Right, it's always said, you know, if you've noticed it, it's always said, established in eighteen sixty five. And it's definitely something to notice now as we're approaching, you know, this, you know, historic anniversary. It's crazy, I was, I drive around now, and I see things, I saw Zimmer Brothers was celebrating like their one hundred and thirtieth anniversary not too long ago, and I'm thinking, wow, we're older. You know, when you think about it that way, I mean, eighteen sixty five, you know, it's a long time ago. To put it in perspective, you know, the Civil War was ending, among other things. You know, just that picture, we'll see a little bit, that was our original one room studio house, which, I believe, the tree or plant that was on there is still at Hagan, Nassau? Hagan, right, there's a little plaque.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, so it still lives on, and then we'll get into talking about that, the latter half of the year. Any questions on the focus and what we're setting out to do this year? There's going to be more to come, as, but this is kind of like broad strokes. But I wanted to start the year off with some knowledge of what we're focusing on.
I'll make a comment about the, I think all these goals seem, I think, really appropriate, and I'm looking forward to them, and hearing more about them throughout the year. I think the social anxiety issue, the anxious generation, you know, study, I think is really very important. You know, it's a crucial issue, I, you know, I will be very interested to see, you know, how that conversation evolves, you know, across the year. And I guess my assumption is, but maybe, you know, if you could confirm it, I mean, you know, you alluded to, and we've all heard a little bit about pending, you know, state action. But we all know that a lot of school districts, even some close by, you know, have taken some action already. So I guess my assumption would be that we're studying this independently and may be prepared to do things that are separate from even, or prior to even, you know, what the state mandates ultimately.
Exactly, we've already done things in different buildings, which I'll report on based on reading this book and even before this book. You know, we're not going to just do what the state says, like, just like everything, we're going to do what we think is good for spectacle. However, there might be mandates that we have to do, you know, regardless. And there is, you know, there's talk, you know, about cell phones being banned in schools, you know, by the governor. Don't know if that's going to happen, or, or some sort of in the middle. We definitely have, and I think the principals will talk about certain things, not tonight, but some of the goals which we talked about. We definitely feel students are a little more aware, we want to make them more aware. And we've definitely started this year with less, I don't know what the word, I don't say issues, but less noise about cell phones, where I think people are more aware of it, but we're not, they're not aware enough. So that's why, that's why we want to do that work, and then who knows, it could be bad. And then we'll have to deal with that also.
Yeah, I'd be very interested, I think we all would, you know, hearing more about the action steps that you referred to, you know, that are going to be implemented in the buildings, so it would be something I'd be very certainly, certainly very interested. And I, you know, I'm happy to see that there's going to be a real engagement with the students. And I think, from what I've heard, and even from dealing with students who are a little bit older at the college level, you know, it's on students' minds, I mean, I think they really are, in a way, it's kind of unavoidable, the talk is in, in the air. And I think they, many students, my sense is that they really want to, want to think more about this and then really welcome the opportunity to begin to think a little more critically about the way they use phones. Because I said, especially with, when our students are at the high school level, I think there is that critical awareness already at that point of how, how this phenomenon is affecting them. I certainly see it at the college level, and, you know, you know, logic dictates that it's, you know, it's a growing awareness prior to that, too.
We're starting to see that, I think the principals will agree, but we need to multiply it a little bit and you think it, and that's sort of the task. And I know they probably could even talk about it right now, but we'll put together something more formal as, as we move forward.
Great, great.
Thanks.
Up next, I love point oh two, the elementary admin update.
Next, I 11.02, the elementary admin update.
All right, um, so we've had a great few weeks at Nassau opening up schools. Um, I was kidding around with, uh, Dr. Mulford, Mr. Farrell, and Dr. Daniele, because I think we had them, uh, three consecutive days because the, you know, as, as, as students get older, definitely the gravity of graduation ceremonies becomes heavier. But I think it might even work in the opposite way with the first day of school. And it's really tough to be kind of the energy of, uh, in particular, the new kindergarteners who have never been in a Spackenkill school. Uh, we had perfect weather, I think it was seventy-five and sunny each day, so. Um, and, and really, you know, the goal, the goals of the first couple of weeks are really all about building relationships, building routines, um, and a sense of community, which has been fun to watch. Uh, each teacher, each staff member kind of has their own style around those, um, goals, but we all do it. Um, and it's fun to be a part of that. Uh, the first week, we always have a back-to-school mingle on the Nassau playground. Um, yeah, I was worried when I, I got there ripe, um, I think it was six o'clock that it started. And there, there were a bunch of spots open. And by the time I left, I had two cars waiting for my spot. And we have a pretty big parking lot, so very well attended. Uh, PTA did a nice job with that. And really, the only other things that are, that are coming up, um, I'm sure Mr. De Souza will talk about curriculum night. He already, uh, had his. Mine is Thursday. We always look forward to getting the parents in. Um, I typically do an opening and then they go to the classrooms. And then we have our first field trip, uh, on the books. Uh, we have Meadowbrook Farms, our kindergartners are gonna go apple picking on October second. So, uh, it's been a, been a wonderful opening. Thank you.
Evening, everybody. Um, I like those same sentiments at Hagan. It's been an awesome opening. Kids smiling, excited to be back to school, getting into the routine of things. Um, it was awesome to see so many Hagan kids at the playground mingle, uh, going back to the old stopping grounds and old playground at, um, Nassau. Uh, we did have our curriculum night last Wednesday. Uh, by the nature of the Game of Thrones-like parking lot, it was well-attended. Uh, we had, you know, most teachers had all their parents in, which was phenomenal, thanks to volunteers from NHS and Leo Club. We were able to have some childcare opportunities in the gym. So parents that, you know, couldn't find childcare, we, we gave them that opportunity to at least attend, um, their child's presentation, which was really good. Um, our book fair is coming up, right, right around the corner in a couple of weeks. We have our O N teams starting to formulate and starting to, uh, think about tryouts. Um, Mrs. Squerler does an awesome job with that. Um, so more information to come to families that are interested in, in that opportunity. And our music ensembles have kicked off. Um, today was the first, or this week was the first week of it. Um, so chorus, band, strings, they're all in full effect. Um, next week, we'll start bussing as well in the morning, which is a great opportunity for people. So, um, yeah, it's, it's alive, seven forty-five. We got Mr. Andreas leading kids singing and it's energetic. So, um, really awesome start. Thanks.
Up next, uh, we have our secondary administration update.
Evening, everybody. So we're off and running at Todd. We've, we've had a great start to the school year. Uh, you know, we've got our new sixth graders in that are learning how, how things happen at Todd, they're learning their lockers, they're running around going crazy, trying to be worried about getting to the next class on time, no matter how many times we tell them it's okay, teachers understand, you're still finding your way around. But, uh, it's going great so far. We've got our P positivity project is, is up and running. We're doing curiosity this week. Last week, we were doing leadership. Uh, we started out the positivity project with a couple of days of virtual assemblies, we'll call them, with the students that we do, that Mr. Doherty and I did, uh, via the Chromebook. So we were passed into the, the screens in every, every classroom. Uh, we went over things, just beginning of the school year things, like code of conduct, the handbook, um, things like that. Uh, we've also got our Avid program is up and running with a new group of seventh graders this year. Uh, and this is the first year that Avid has moved up to the high school. So there, there's a group of ninth graders up there that were our first Avid kids back when they were in seventh grade. So it's great to kind of see them moving on and we're excited to see what they do and what, you know, the whole Avid program can do once we have it up and running from seventh grade all the way up through twelfth grade. Uh, and the big thing we got coming up is tomorrow night, we have our parent night. So we'll have all our parents in, walk in their kids' schedules, meeting their, their teachers, and it'll be, it's always a great night. Parents have a good time and it's, they, you know, get a lot of important information. Thank you.
High school, we had a terrible opening. We had absolutely fantastic opening. And I, I don't want people to think I just come up here and I'm just saying that loosely. It was a very good opening. Um, you know, the ninth graders that came up are, they're wonderful. I mean.
You're welcome.
I'm serious, they just are, they're delightful young men and women. Um, you can definitely feel the difference with the bigger class coming up in the hallway. Um, they're more, they're, obviously, they're more kids. Uh, but it's, but it's been extremely, extremely positive. Uh, and although we've only been open a short time, a lot has already taken place. Um, like we do every year, the board is aware. Uh, the first two days, uh, the assistant principal, I can, I meet with all the kids through gym classes. So half the kids on the first day, the second half of the kids on the second day. And there we talked about, you know, the DAS, our code of conduct, expectations, those type of things. Big one this year was cell phones. And we had already talked with our staff about what we were gonna speak with the students about, uh, when we had our own building meeting during conference day. Um, and although, again, we've only been open for a short period of time, the students have been extremely receptive. And I'm not gonna take time tonight to really get into the cellphone and what we've done at this point so far. Um, students have been very receptive. And again, Ken and I, even at this point, have done several formal observations already on teachers. We've been in the classrooms, plus the other informal ones. Neither of us have ever seen a cellphone out on a desk or a kid using it during lecture. So more to come on that. Ken has done an outstanding job. He's got an incentive program going. Um, but, you know, as we move on with the school year, I'm gonna allow him to talk more about that. We're almost done with our fire drills for the first half of the year. We've got one left. We did our bus drill. Um, and here's an interesting thing that I've noticed, too. In, in the past, when we did the bus drills, we'd get a full-size bus, I'd open up the door in the back and like two kids would come out. You know, because everybody was getting dropped off at school. Not this year. Every bus that I did, um, had basically a full bus. And when we do bus drills, it slows up traffic to some extent, obviously, because, you know, it takes longer for them to get through. There were far fewer parents, uh, dropping off that jammed up Hagan and Spackenkill Road. So why that is, I don't know, but I, I wanted to share with the board because it was an observation that, that I had had. Um, like Dustin said, their open house is tomorrow. Ours was, uh, Thursday of last week. It was excellent to see everybody. People very happy, um, very go lucky, it was, it was a great night. Um, so sports have started, clubs have started. Like I said before, casting for the, you know, for the first play has already been completed as of today. So we're chugging along and looking forward to an awesome school year. So, thank you, guys.
Thanks. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, communications, twelve point zero one, public comment on non-agenda items. I don't think we have any. Um, board correspondence, um, uh, I'm seeing we had two, one regarding, um, vaccines. We've gotten these multiple times, they have been addressed. Um, and two, um, emails regarding the Todd playground. Um, and, uh, Mr. Doherty had reached out to the person and they've already spoken. So those were the board correspondents. Anybody have any other ones besides that? Um, moving on to thirteen point oh one, comments from the board. Comments from the board? All right. Uh, I'd just like to say, um, have a great school year. I mean, uh, thank you, that sounded like an awesome review of our, our first couple of weeks. Um, always some, uh, some hiccups that are nicely handled by our, our admins. And, uh, the kids seem to have a great time, you know, starting up the school year this year. Um, I wanna say thank you to our admins here, admins at the school, our teachers, our staff, and, uh, all of our kids for having a great opening a couple of weeks. We really appreciate everything that you guys did to make it successful and, uh, we look forward to the rest of the school year. And I will turn it over to our superintendent, comments from our superintendent.
Yeah, just similar, uh, feeling, just the opening was fantastic. There's nothing like the first day of school and the energy that it brings. Um, I think, uh, Mr. Lynch was correct, it almost looks in reverse that the first day of school is, is like, uh, nicer than the graduation, uh, you know, than, than, than the kids get older. But just the energy and the parents dropping them off and the hugs and the pictures. The weather cooperating is just a nice thing. We have no control over that, but, but, you know, I, if I'm not mistaken, I do believe it was extremely hot at the beginning of last, the last, uh, school year. Um, so just, just having that cooperation, but in the community involvement has been phenomenal, um, as far as, you know, uh, those first couple of days. Even the other day, we had a football, just a football game and there was no place to park. You know, uh, just, just great for the community. And it's exciting, like, we're back, like, it's not, it's not summer anymore, you know, I think that we're in like our third week. Um, things are up and running and, you know, it's like, it's like we never left. Summer goes quick. Uh, but, uh, just exciting, just, just, just the freshness. Uh, and, uh, you know, thank you for everyone for, for a great opening and the principals were here and, like Mr. Cohen said, you know, uh, the teachers and the staff and everyone for just, just making it, you know, a great opening for the kids, making them feel welcome. More to come. So, uh, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. No executive session tonight, right? There's nothing to do. Okay, excellent. Moving along, uh, we have an adjournment. Do have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Have a second? All in favor? All right. Meeting adjourned. See you next time.